Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Hill.
Here.
Hill, here. Meck.
Here.
Meck, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Cantellos Zelman.
Here.
Cantellos Zelman, here. Slattery. Slattery absent. Klinker.
Here.
Klinker, here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Alexander.
Here.
Alexander, here. Bellato.
Here.
Bellato, here. Casadus.
Here.
Casadus, here. Twelve present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, we move to presentation of general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the City Council minutes for the date of August 27, 2019. We have a motion by Alderman Cantellos Zelman, a second by Alderman Meck. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holloway, to the podium, please. And whoever, family members, who want to stand along with them or behind them, I want you to stand over here. Do you mind? There's one more. Face it this way. I'm going to face it. Open the end. You can be behind. You know what I mean? You're going to wave your right hand. And you're going to repeat after me.
Okay.
Nice and easy. I state your name.
Hi, I'm Brian Christopher Holloway.
Having been appointed.
Have been appointed.
To the office.
To the office.
A full-time officer.
A full-time officer.
For the City of Blue Island.
For the City of Blue Island.
In the County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of office.
Of office.
Of a full-time police officer.
Of a full-time police officer.
For the City of Blue Island.
For the City of Blue Island.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer. I'll hold on to the microphone. Officer Holloway, congratulations from the Capitol.
Can we stand together for another picture?
A little close-up, come on. There you go.
Do you want me to use one of your phones? Take one. There you go.
Congratulations, Officer.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Congratulations again. Now I'll open up for public comment.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jerry Dagnes. That's D-A-G-E-N-A-I-S. I live at 12814 Irving Avenue, Blue Island. The subject of my comments tonight are the Cal-SAG Trail. And I see by the agenda that the issues I'm concerned with are going to be addressed on item number eight, B, number three, motion to approve a Cal-SAG Trail maintenance proposal. Okay, I am a bicycle trail advocate. And I log hundreds of miles a year doing this for my health and just pure enjoyment. I'd like to make the committee of members who are going to make a motion on this project aware of what's going on over at Phase Point. I'm over there frequently, at least a couple of times a week. And what we have now is a beautiful trail going from Ashland Avenue through Phase Point to the bridge over the Little Calumet River. That trail now has not had any maintenance done on it since it was built. What do I mean by maintenance? It's the sides of the trail, the shoulders, are filled with weeds to six and seven feet in height. In fact, when I bike down that trail, down the yellow line down the center, you have to brush your way through the weeds. I have photos in my iPad here of when the trail was built, after it was built, immediately after it was built, and as it is now. If any of the committee members would like to see these conditions, I would be glad to show them to you after the meeting or whenever. But for me, and what I see in doing my biking, it's a matter of, it boils down to a quality of life issue for the community. Quality of life, yes. It brings people to the community for recreation and enjoyment, and also maybe they want to stop in and eat somewhere. How do I know? Well, if I biked the trail, started at Alsip, the Cicero and Freedom Park there, Cicero Avenue, you bike west on that trail and it's full of people all the time. During the week, weekends, so on and so forth, there's lots of people using it. On top of all that, each of the municipalities that that trail passes through has some sort of a responsibility to maintain the trail. And I've been out there further west in the Payless area where I've seen big, huge tractors coming through pulling lawnmowers to trim the sides of the trail. So those of you who are going to vote on such an issue, I urge you to please take these thoughts of mine into consideration. And let's beautify the trail. And also, I see on item number four, project status, I.DOT Construction Engineering Service Agreement. Please, let's get this done. The more we wait, the more time goes by. And I know there's more pressing issues in the community, very important things that we're all concerned with. But for me, for trail enthusiasts, this is my issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Donna Lee. I live in Deer Point. I am the neighborhood watch captain for California Gardens in Deer Point. One of the questions that I wanted to ask was, why was the substation taken from the California Gardens area, police? Why was?
I get manpower, I would assume.
Manpower?
Right.
Okay. One of the issues that we have over in, my neighborhood watch meeting is once a month, every Thursday, once a month, at 7:00 P.M. One of the issues that we are having over in California Gardens is drag racing. What I understand, the police has been called out several times. And they come, cars disperse, and then again about 6:00 P.M. it starts up again. This is not the first time I've heard about this drag racing. And I'm trying to see if we can kind of get to a consensus.
Are they going down, if I may interrupt, are they going north and south in California or on your street?
No, on, this is, I live in Deer Point, California Gardens, on 141st Street and Place, right there by that elementary school, Gordon.
Okay. So that's Harris.
No. No.
On the other side?
Place. Place.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Maybe I missed some, okay. So.
And for what?
At minimum, could we have some presence over there? I mean, the residents, even though the color of the cars.
If you've got plate numbers, would assist us, but again, we, Chief is here. We'll try to send somebody out ASAP to see if we can catch them. But we need the communities, as you know, as.
They ca-
Watch group, we need the plate number. And people are willing to testify and say, this is the car? This is the car?
They know the cars. They, from what I understand, they do know the cars.
Okay.
You know, the color of the cars. But plate numbers, I mean, if they're drag racing and going so fast, so.
Make and model will also help.
Okay, but also the police over there.
Yes.
Can we, you know, instead of just doing a drive-by, can we allocate some officers over there?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Carol De Pace Green. I hope you can hear me. I'm very happy to see that there has been more than one rally to maintain a community hospital in Blue Island. I was happy to see the video of employees in front of St. Benedict's during the hearing. I was very happy to see the union presence and union rally. I was happy to see you there, Mayor. I was happy to see State Representatives Slaughter and Barbretta present, and both speaking. I did not see Will Davis, although I heard his name spoken. I didn't see any of our aldermen. And I imagine that's because most of you have other commitments, such as full-time jobs, that probably kept you away from that particular opportunity. Lucky you, there's going to be more opportunities this Saturday. One is going to be at 9:00. The mayor's going to have a rally. There's going to be a march at 1:00. And I think it's important for our elected officials to be able to talk about the many protests, peaceful protests, regarding the issues that are going on with that hospital because it absolutely needs to be sold. It should not be left a shell. I don't know how many of you are keeping up with the information that's being posted on the healthcare website. I certainly have emailed the last piece of information to all of you. Some of you have responded. Thank you. Alderman Meck, thank you for responding. And thank you for reading it. You know, some people don't have time to read it. We get it. If you don't have time to read it and you don't have time to see it, you probably don't have time to be sitting in this seat that you're occupying because you really don't have time to take care of the people's business. And I don't care what seat you're sitting in, you're here for the sole purpose of taking care of the people's business, not just warming the chair. So we do want you to advocate. We do want to see you at the 9:00 rally, the 1:00 peaceful protest. Do something because we do want to see your presence. And we do want to hear from you, and we do want you to keep us updated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, may I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Green, I was there at that rally, also with Alderman Klinker.
I didn't see you. Thank you for telling me that you were there because if you didn't tell me that you were there, I didn't see you in the video.
Yeah, I was there. I talked to the guy, actually. So I wasn't behind the, or the people where I was out in the audience, but I was there.
They were there.
That, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. And maybe, you know, it's unfortunate, the camera didn't turn around so that people could see who all was there. Thank you for being there. I appreciate it. Thank you for being there. I appreciate it. Next time, you're, our elected officials, say something. You know, because you have a right to speak too. Thanks.
Anyone else? I'll move on to report of city officials presenting resolutions. Under Mayor's announcements, I want to remind everyone, almost, was it 18 years ago tomorrow? Is the 9/11. It changed not only the lives of Americans here in this country, but basically the lives of everyone across the world. It's a day that, just like December the 7th, Pearl Harbor Day, 9/11 is our Pearl Harbor for the younger generations. Tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and I'm assuming it's in front of the police station, will be a ceremony, a brief ceremony commemorating, remembering all those who lost their lives, those who went to go support, the first responders, everyone who had anything to do with 9/11 in order to address the victims in that terrible day in the lives of this country. So if you can make it, tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in front of the Blue Island Police Station, a little brief ceremony in recognition for all those who lost their lives on that horrendous day. There's also, for first responders, this coming Sunday, the 15th, was called a Blue Mass for all first responders and military personnel at St. Benedict's Church Parish at 3:00. All are welcome. I repeat, all are welcome, not only them. But again, it's for first responders, veterans. We would like the whole community to be out there and attend the Blue Mass this coming Sunday at 3:00. As Ms. De Pace Green has mentioned, there will be a rally to show support for keeping the hospital open. And also, a way of showing, having quality care options in Blue Island, there will be a rally hosted by the City of Blue Island. We've posted these in English and Spanish. We're not done yet. In fact, we've contacted the school districts, the high schools, the grammar schools, the mayor's office, the elected officials, state, federal residents. And we continue requesting all of you to spread the word. You're good in Facebook. You're good at Twitter, so let's show it. We need massive amount of people. The veterans groups are supposed to be showing up. So there's no excuse.
What, did you pass them out to the schools already? Because I have high school, did that get it yet?
Well, let's put it this way. We had to get permission. And once they okay it, each superintendent and each principal, once it prickles down, then they're supposed to help us spread the word. So we'll have these. If you need some, we have them in English and Spanish. We posted it in the buildings that we control. And we just want you to spread the word.
I have another one question. I know you made a lot of phone calls out for the Fourth of July. Do you think you could send out phone calls for this?
Let me ask you this. If you grant us permission, are reverse 911?
Oh, wait. I mean, but we sent them out for the fireworks, right? About the parade?
Just want to see. We can do it. So we can do that. Again, it's our time, not only for Blounte Show, but also the Southland. And again, as I stressed before, it's not only a Blue Island issue, it's not a Southland issue. It's an American hospital issue that needs to be addressed. That institution's been there, as I stated before, at that last rally since 1905. There's options. And let me ask, add this without going too much in detail. Almost two hours after that rally, I received a call that Mount Sinai had made a phone call regarding Metro South and inquiries into that. So let's keep it going. And I'm not privy as to whether negotiations have started, but they called, finding out, wanting more information regarding that. So we keep, we keep the pressure on, and there's other options that work, and I cannot discuss at this time. City Clerk, any business, any bids?
I do have one item. I got a phone call Sunday and an email from Alderman Johnson. The Untouchables Parade, where they'd like to have that this Saturday, the 14th. They have got new, people running it, so we'll need a consensus if. It's up to you.
I have no problem.
I checked with the police.
From Hart Park to Memorial Park?
Right, and I checked with the police and fire. They can stay up at.
It's up to the council. What time is it?
It's 11:00.
So I would think probably 11 to noon at the moment. Straight down, I think it's straight down Western Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah? Consensus?
I so move.
And no bid, Your Honor.
Uh, City Treasurer.
Thank you. All the aldermen should receive the reconciliation statement ending August 31, 2019. And I apologize for sending it out late Monday. Both that and the transfer restricted funds.
Motion. We have a motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing is the unrestricted and restricted funds transfer, the total of 136,303,056 cents.
Need a motion, please. Need a motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Klinker. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The last thing, I want to inform the council. Some of the aldermen have asked for the expenditure and receivables. We're trying to put that all together so it's more accurate and up to date. So I'm trying to, hopefully within a week or two, definitely for the end of the third quarter, that'll be hopefully put together. Dave Myers is working, and everyone else is trying to put it together. So I apologize for that, and you will get the information because if we print it out now, it's not going to be accurate. Because the account expenditures are correct, but the receivables are not. So I'm, we're working on it. Okay, thank you. As soon as is possible. Any other information, please don't hesitate to call.
Thank you. Uh, City Attorney?
All right.
Committee reports, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We haven't had a meeting since our last City Council. Our next meeting is tomorrow, right here at 7:00 P.M.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. The meeting, we met yesterday, September 9th, here in the East Annex. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Kevin Donahue at 6:07 P.M. in the East Annex. Roll call was undertaken. Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Klinker, and Alexander in attendance. Absent was Alderman Johnson. Also in attendance was City Engineer Eric Alvarez with Robinson Engineering and Lisa Durbin. This is now the second meeting in a row that there is nobody from the Finance Administration Department in attendance. Lisa Durbin offered the only public comment, inquiring about sales tax revenues. The first item up for discussion was the accounts payable for 9/11/2019 and the amount of $536,557.09. There is much discussion and questions asked, but since nobody from the administration was there to answer, eight items were pulled from the accounts payable until further explanation can be given. Those items are as follows: Acorn Legal, Advanced Orthopedics, BI, Cresswood Rotary, Delgado Law Firm, Municipal Systems, Inc., Odelson and Stirk, Robert Malara Law Firm, and the law firm Cynthia Harris. There is a motion made by Alderman Bellato and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the accounts payable for $481,687.54 was approved unanimously. So I'd like to make that in the form of a motion for the new, the new number for the accounts payable.
They have a motion to have a second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, the committee heard a proposal from Illinois Fire Restoration Services, Inc. to provide maintenance along the Calumet Sag Trail. The initial cost would be $1,375, which would cut down the three-to-five-foot tall grass and brush along the pathway. According to Mr. Dagnes, it's taller, which I believe. After that, the maintenance would occur weekly at a rate of $210 until the season's over. This will be reimbursed to the city through a grant through the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And Eric, we could reapply next year for the same thing?
Yeah, well, limited amount of grant points, but we have enough definitely to cover this year.
This year. So there's enough to cover this year, and next year we'll reevaluate. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Cal-SAG maintenance proposal.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Hill. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The committee then heard a proposal from Eric Alvarez regarding the selection of an engineering firm for the Cal-SAG Trail, Blue Island West segment. The name of the firm is, was it Intera?
Terra Engineering.
Terra Engineering, and they were also the engineering firm who did the work on the already existing portion of the trail. There's a motion by Alderman Alexander and a second by Alderman Bellato to approve Terra Engineering. I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Motion. Do I have a second by Alderman Bellato? Any questions?
And the work would be again next, next spring, early next spring?
Should be in early spring. It's on schedule, early spring.
Early spring.
Motion, second. Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Zelman.
Aye.
Cantellos Zelman, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Uh, next, the committee discussed a proposal with the Village of Proposeon for water connection. The committee received an estimate, estimated numbers from our accounting department and the City Treasurer, but was waiting on the engineering numbers to come in to make a final decision. It was moved to table until the next meeting. The committee then heard a proposal from Sam Schwartz regarding mixed-use development, shared parking study for the City of Blue Island. and would cost the city $8,600 to complete, which will be paid out of Business District funds. There's a motion by Alderman Bellato and a second by Alderman Klinker to approve Sam Schwartz to complete this parking study. Voice vote was taken. The matter was approved unanimously. Committee discussed a proposed purchasing policy, which was first proposed in June. It's now on its third draft. There is much discussion, and many changes were made. There's a motion by Alderman Bellato and a second by Alderman Klinker to approve the amended purchasing policy. Voice vote was taken, and the measure was, the motion was approved unanimously. Finally, the committee discussed payroll for the week of August 23rd, 2019, and September 6th, 2019. There's a motion made by Alderman Klinker to approve the August 23rd payroll for $330,518.01. And a second made by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, and the payroll was approved unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, there is a motion to approve the September 6th, 2019 payroll for $322,652.48. Motion was made by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the matter was approved unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve this payroll.
Second by Alderman Kilk. Any questions? Roll call.
Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Meck.
Aye.
Meck, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Cantellos Omen.
Aye.
Cantellos Omen, aye. Klinker.
Aye.
Klinker, aye. Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Cosidas.
Aye.
Cosidas, aye. 12 ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The committee then discussed moving the finance committee to the first and third Monday of the month, there being no further business. There's a motion by Alderman Klinker and a second by Alderman Alexander to adjourn the meeting. Voice vote was taken. The meeting was adjourned at 8:30 p.m. Our next meeting will be September 16th, this upcoming Monday, at 6:00 p.m. in the East Anx. Thank you.
Thank you much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
There's no report. Our next meeting is the 17th, next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. here.
Thank you. Municipal Services Committee?
No report. Our next meeting is October the 9th, 6:00 o'clock here in the East Anx.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
No report. Our next meeting is September 17th at 7:00 p.m.
Any Aldermanic announcements or comments? Alderman Bellato.
All right, Mayor. I have a prepared statement that I was debating on bringing up tonight or not, but I'll bring it up tonight. It's been a quick meeting. So it's been about six months since we submitted a few. Alderman and myself, and I believe Alderman Bill Farrenwald submitted some questions related to the questionable purchase of two Chevy Tahos. And this is the previous city council. So, Mr. Mayor, are you still in receipt of these questions?
In fact, I gave all those answers to the Cook County State's Attorney's Office, and they have my responses. So they have the investigation, and that's been almost, what, eight, nine months ago.
So do you plan on providing the answers to the council?
I have to let, what they told me, I had to provide everything to them. I provided them everything.
All right. So we know, just to bring, this is a new council. We haven't had this discussion with this new council. So we know that sometime eight months ago or so, there was possibly two cars purchased with a check that, from a bank that the city does not use to carry motors. These vehicles were equipped with police lights and equipment, and at least one vehicle is being used for personal business by Augustus Corkus, personal relationship to the mayor, who has no role in the city. Do you dispute any of those facts, Mr. Mayor?
From my understanding, they're not police vehicles. That's what I heard.
All right.
They were to inspect them.
So we also have some questions about, that was brought to light by a few citizens also, about the possible bi-il.gov website. Then, we had some questions on that when we submitted our questions. Again, are you under investigation right now at the state or federal level that you know?
Did I know a federal, no state. They said they've been investigated, but I've given them all the information that I know.
All right. And have you been interviewed?
Yeah.
Clerk, do you have any new information since this last was discussed at the city council?
No.
I have a question. This is all due to me. Are we, Tahos, are we paying for storage for the Tahos?
I have no idea where they are. The county might even have them. I have no idea.
All right. So my, my proposal is, we really don't know as a city council what's going on yet, and it's becoming quite of a joke in the community. I hear it when I stop at the local establishment, just, you know, fix the streets with selling the Tahos. I'm sure everybody in this council has been privy to some questions like that. And it's not being taken seriously, and now it's six months later since we submitted these questions. So I'd like to propose, I'd like to make a motion that, that we do a roll call tonight to see if the city council is in favor of discussing a possible investigation, not specifics yet, but discuss, discuss a possible internal investigation regarding this issue so we have clarity on what's going on. So I'd like to make a motion that we take a roll call to see if at least the interest is there by the council to discuss this at a future meeting.
I second the motion.
Alderman, it's not on the agenda.
This is just a poll. This is not a decision.
Well, then, you can poll the, you can poll the council.
Then I'm asking for a poll roll call if the council's interested in continuing this discussion at a different meeting. So Clerk, I'm asking you for a poll. Roll call.
May I, discussion, and this vote?
Yeah, I think they-
Is there a discussion period?
Well, the motion was made and seconded, so.
Maybe we'd like to also do a poll about whether there's interest in having the city council have some kind of investigation done into the incredible costs that will make this pale by comparison.
But Alderman, that's why I didn't even bring up any of that. I want to send this to a committee. So that can be discussed and hashed out there. Right now, it's just if the interest is there to pursue, I'll ask you more questions. Okay, so, so I'm asking for a roll call, Clerk.
On, on what item? On what, what item?
I'm asking for a poll. If the, is it yes or no, can we add an agenda item to a future committee meeting to discuss more discussions on this possible investigation?
As the committee chair, they're more than welcome to put that on.
I'm asking for a roll call or a poll of my Alderman. I'll complete it myself if the Clerk doesn't want to.
It's not that I don't want to. I don't know what I'm, I mean, I don't know what I'm taking a motion and a second for. What, what item?
Yeah, people are more than welcome to express their opinion, but as a motion, I don't think it's appropriate.
Ask him. Where do you want him to start? I mean, ask him. Nancy?
I absolutely, I absolutely agree that it should be put on the next committee motion, agenda.
I, I mean, I-
Just go down the line. It's, it's not, I don't want to drag this out. I don't know what you're starting with today.
Donahue wants it?
What committee is it going to, or are you planning?
The next, I was going to bring that up the next, if it's, depends if it's favorable or not. If it's not favorable, I'm not, I'm done.
I personally don't see the benefit of, I've thought about having an investigation, and I don't understand frankly what we could get out of it because nobody can compel anyone to testify. No one can go under oath.
And that's where you're free at whatever committee it goes to to talk about it. So I, we skipped over-
Okay, Holly, yeah.
Alderman Holly?
I don't see what, no.
I just think we have a lot more important things to focus on. I'd say no.
Shannon?
Yes.
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes.
I mean, it's also.
Yes.
Yes.
Considering there's a majority, I'd like to send it to the next available committee
meeting. Whose meeting's next?
Can we introduce Alderman?
No, it's not on the agenda for that. It's too late.
Alderman Donahue's.
Is yours finance on Monday? I'd like the proposal to be on Monday's agenda for finance, with anybody welcome to come. You can go to any committee after that. That's all I have unless anybody else has anything. Okay, anybody else?
I have announcements.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I have two things. First, seeing the park district in the back, I know they're looking for barbecue, our volunteers for barbecue on the hill stilts, so if you want to be part of the Q crew, sign up for that. And then, second, for executive session, I'd like to have our legislative council in there. So procedurally, we need to do a motion, separate motion for that.
To allow-
The legislative council in executive session. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
So, so the-
Thank you.
A couple things. One is, as the fall is coming, I don't know about the rest of the Aldermen here, but I'm getting a lot of requests about alleys, the conditions of the alleys. And we talked about it a little bit in Municipal Services tonight, and Alderman Carr has already noted that, I think, previously. And we know that Public Works is under a lot of stress and pressure because they can't afford to hire enough people to do what needs to be done. And I don't have a solution to propose right now, but I just want to acknowledge that the alleys, certainly in parts of our ward, I would consider to be a bigger problem in the streets because it's to the point where people just about can't get down their alleys into access to their garages. So it's a really important thing that, you know, we just need to really focus on. And I guess, secondly, I would just comment on the proposal here to do an investigation on the Tahos, that, you know, if we have priorities, we want to set them, you know, we're at the, at the end stages here of spending, you know, what, by my calculation is about $5 million in settling of the Harrow and Robbie Silva case. And the, if you will read the last filing by the law firm that was suing the city, you will see that there's reason to wonder and maybe for the city to investigate why certain leaders and certain people who acted as leaders, who weren't leaders, in that case have left us with a $5 million expense. It makes the Tahoe thing look like a joke in comparison. So, just, if those are our priorities, that would be a priority.
Thank you very much. Treasurer?
Yes, I forgot to mention, to inform the council, that tax anticipation, second installment, I'm planning to pay it either by Monday or next week for sure. It's 200, with interest, it's 254,000 some dollars, but that'll be paid next week. It's due by the 28th or 29th. But we're paying it. Get it off the chart, get it off the chart.
Thank you very much. Any other? Go ahead.
If you recall, there were deceit lies among leaders, which caused the lawsuit for Harrow. So there are additional people that are deceiving the city of Blue Island. They need to be exposed. So that's why my guess for the Tahoe investigation.
Okay.
Okay?
Do we have any update on the vehicle sticker?
I do.
Awesome.
So far this year, we've sold 11,726 stickers, which is 387 more than last year's for a total of increase of $15,406.
Good job, chief.
Let me add this. I've gotten complaints about the Tahoe trailers parked in front of their homes. They're saying, if you're doing it with the stickers, trailers have to go also from the city streets. So that's another issue we got to address, the trailers that are parked in front of their homes. From one, unfortunately, it's one establishment here in Blue Island, but there might be other ones landscaping whatever they're parked in front of their homes. So that has to be addressed. Go ahead.
On Monday, I called the Domino Pizza Corporation, and I found out that they do have grants. We were talking about the alleys, so they do have grants in order to fix the streets and stuff. So as, they told me, as city council, we can apply for that.
Right. But they will stamp their Domino's.
Okay, it's all right. We'll take what we can get, man.
Okay.